Okay, and pull out your phone and. There we go. Just gonna force you to register another thing. Oh, no, you're okay.
Hey, Tiff.
Was there more than one?
Do you have to let her in or no?
No, I don't, I don't leave this.
Okay, I'll try a different one.
Well, there was like four invites, or three invites.
City council meeting live one.
Yeah, city council live is.
And then join.
The other one is just like a placeholder that I.
Oh, I think maybe that's the one.
And then join.
Thanks.
He'll get in there. Give it a second. Okay, so what we're going to do now, we're gonna hit Settings.
So then you'll unmute our mics when we start.
No, 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 you, no, you wanna mute your, uh, your speaker.
Your speaker.
Your mic will already pick it up.
What mic should say on?
Your mic's catching everything you're gonna say.
Yes, that'll work.
And we know it's tied to you.
Um, we're gonna turn it down.
Is that the problem like with this little guy?
Uh, so I'm gonna hit Create Voice Profile and you're just gonna read, uh, do the same.
I'm not wearing a very good shirt for this tonight.
Yeah, you got it. You're good. Alright, so, uh, go ahead and read this from.
Hi, teams. I'm going to speak for a moment to help you get to know my voice better. You need to hear more than just a few words to be able to accurately recognize me in meetings. If I make a mistake, that's alright. You'll let me know if I need to read this again.
Let's see if they got it. It might be too loud in the environment. Hey, look at that, great. Alright, and then last but not least, we're going to set your mic volume to a bit lower. Great, and we're going to have you join that meeting. Okay, so let's make sure your speakers are going to be off. And your microphone is on. We're gonna need to unmute it. And so you can see that there is live transcription happening, um, so. You can see, oh, there you go. Uh, that is what we're looking at right now. So, you are good to go. We don't have to.
I don't wanna see myself.
Yeah, you have to. Uh, so, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to take this out or?
Uh, you don't need to, it needs to stay on, but that's about it.
Okay.
This is also a way that someone can share content to everyone. It will be on all of your screens if it's shared in this meeting.
That's probably what we should not be doing, but.
Well, I mean, I'm specifically talking about like if there's a presentation or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, I went to sleep.
Brendan, it's not doing to this one.
So, Brendan?
I don't know what to compare it to, but it's nice watching it come together. Did you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can just like set this aside. And then I can open this. Cause I can, I can, just I'm pretty much.
Get out and they all get excited and they start testing each other, so I was like, yeah. So we drove, we drive out through your loop, go past Paul's, do the IC as Jackson.
I tried and it keeps coming back to the same place.
Uh, so going out.
I wish it was like sealed in for tonight, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, just make sure. All weird you know. I can see everything.
And it's transcribing it?
Yes.
I'm gonna join again.
Yeah, you are.
Are you getting mine?
That's why I said that. Oh, this is a lot here.
Okay, so if you're gonna, you're gonna click on this and you're gonna have something to read, so it recognizes your voice, okay?
Hi, teams. Hi, teams. I'm going to speak for a moment to help you get to know my voice better. You need to hear more than just a few words to be able to accurately recognize me in meetings. If I make a mistake, that's alright. You'll let me know if I need to read this again.
I made sure you hear me saying nay. It's familiar with my nay.
Much more intending to read that out when I'm saying everyone's out.
Yeah.
It did well.
Well, thanks.
Hey, that must've been Brendan's voice, okay.
Everybody knows your voice after eight years. Yeah.
Where are you getting out of it?
So these will go away when we get the new system?
That's the idea.
But then the new system will have each of us have our own mic that dictates it for us.
That's, that's like the ultimate goal I want to have happen. Um, it's possible that we'll have a mic on the desk itself, or we'll have one in the ceiling that like has a beam formed to you. Um, but I'll. Click on that down there by my.
And unmute her mic.
And I wanna know, just we're doing something new, trying to get technical, that's why we're not starting at five, so we apologize.
There you go. I think that's everyone though, um, so we're good.
So I just minimize this?
Yeah, you can minimize it at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Nay, 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 nay. Okay, no, I haven't joined yet.
He's fighting all of this.
Okay, Decker, when you speak into that mic right there, no, boxy, okay?
There you go. What? Oh, you want me to join?
Yeah.
Join now? After the three times? Okay. Okay, you need to turn your microphone on.
Make sure your speaker's turned off. Okay, put your speaker off. Yeah, turn your speaker off if not.
Audio on, audio on. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Turn that off, down there.
So turn off mine.
Turn off mine.
Whoops, that's wifi. Perfect, thanks.
Just your speaker.
Nice to draw.
Hey. I think we're, hang on one second. Good with Brendan, you good, Tiff?
Yes, I should be good.
Okay, I think we're ready. Okay, ready? We'll call the meeting to order. Tiffany, please take the roll.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Garvey?
Present.
Councilwoman Workla?
Present.
Councilwoman Brendan?
Present.
Councilwoman Hardjo?
Present.
Mayor Cyrus.
Present. Month of record reflected, we do have a quorum for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Uh, we're gonna run down to item number one, city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Would anybody like to get up and speak for or against the proposed budget? Alright. Public hearing closed. Alright, we're gonna run down to recognizing persons in the audience. Purpose of this agenda item is to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on matters that are not listed on the current agenda or within the subject matter jurisdiction of the municipal purity of the city. Comments may not involve personnel matters, legal disputes, or private non-municipal affairs of the constituency. Comments regarding zoning or land use issues may only be made during properly noticed public hearings. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody? Decker, come on down. You gotta test out this new system somehow.
Right.
Is that one hooked up too? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Decker Sanders. I've been in Alba Home since 1988. This evening you'll be taking up discussions of center around values. A value that citizens should not be subsidizing recreation for non-citizens. A value that taxpayers should be the primary beneficiaries amenities provided through their tax dollars. And, a value that citizens should have an active part in how government provides those amenities. And it's as doubtless experienced here in many similar situations. Uh, if you've been counted as council members, there's rarely an absolute solution. There are examples where these values have an active part of just cause. The state of Hawaii is a prime example. Citizens of the state of Hawaii have provided an ID card that provides preferential pricing and access to services at all publicly owned facilities, including recreational facilities. Non-residents are subjected to higher fees and limited accessibilities. These measures seem reasonable considering that the state of Hawaii has a tremendous amount of tourism, resulting in substantial, I believe my technology misses us, demand on those services. However, Mountain Home is not Hawaii. We do not have a torrent of outsiders coming into use our facilities, in fact. In many instances, we are marketing our recreational facilities to the entire Treasure Valley and the state, hoping to draw additional participation in those activities. A protectionist stance as it comes to recreational services is more rightly applied when the outside forces produce a decrease in access for city residents. Implementation of protectionist measures come with a cost and often unintended consequences. For example, I pay taxes and the city of Mountain Home have done so for 37 years. I've not used the city pool in three decades. And now you are considering charging my grandchildren when they come in from Boise an additional fee to use the pool I paid taxes for. I will not pay that additional fee. In that instance, you've lost not only the additional fee you hoped to collect, but you've also lost the initial fee you would have received. And, the pool is not any better off than a citizen that lives in Minn. Challenges when implementing a system to separate citizens from non-citizens at these facilities, and the ongoing cost of maintenance for their operation is the topic that also must be considered if your concern is the wise use of tax dollars. You will also have the opportunity to discuss the golf advisory board. My position on such a board is effectiveness and use. I've made clear in previous statements to the council, so now I simply ask that you honor the citizens of this community which reached into their pockets in the late 80s and bought into the notion that led to the additional nine holes for the golf course. There is no stronger indication about members of the golfing community and the community as a whole to come together with city government to produce substantial changes to our community. You demanded more from the citizens of Mountain Home by increasing the golf fees. Thank you. Allowing the words "tax" and "fees" to be used interchangeably for the purpose of my analogy, recall the quote, "No taxation without representation." The golf course has some of its lowest operating deficits during the period in which the golf advisory board existed. So what further evidence do you need to bring the board back online? Every endeavor with the public contains those who are passionate about that endeavor. I recognize the challenge of bringing strong personalities together if they are left without a common purpose or a charge. But given a charge and the expected result, information can be exchanged, strengths can be identified, weaknesses can be minimized, opportunities can be seized, and threats can be neutralized. Like the old G.I. Joe cartoon saying, knowing is half the battle. Another is to pick your battles. Thank you.
Anybody else? Brendan?
If you like the new system, we should do a test, test, one, two, two. Uh, Brendan McCarthy, as we all know, I'm coming to you all to express some frustration in that. Um, and to make sure that the disinformation is on the record. Since it does look like potentially my time on the Impact Advisory Committee is coming to an end. Potentially on the action that you all take with putting into PNC. As we have someone that's getting appointed, and I for self. Clarify a few things. We have sent all of you letters and documents talking about the concerns we brought up with CIP, growth rate, and all this information concerning the impact fees that we're collecting. And essentially what we're gonna be short, because this CIP was built on that we're growing at 4%. Then the talks that we're growing 3%, we're not growing that. So essentially what's gonna happen is you're gonna collect a dollar and you need to spend $5 for all these projects that you have listed in here. It needs to be adjusted. We've shown you the data, we have tons more, but nobody wants to have a conversation with us. This whole moving the PNC to combining to planning, zoning, everything for our impact fee? No one's reached out to us, no one's talked to us, no one's even brought up anything about the concerns we've had. And so it's really frustrating when myself and other federal committee members have taken the time. How many hours, how many meetings do we have for the count? For the impact fees for them, but nobody wants to have a conversation. And so yet, it's one of these where we're just gonna get rid of you. That's what it feels like. And it's frustrating to me that we can't have a conversation on it. Because essentially who's gonna pay for it? It's the taxpayer. Because you're not gonna have the impact fees, growth is not supporting itself with these infrastructures, and you're gonna go back to the taxpayer with the general taxes. We've asked for reports, we've asked for financials, professional reports, and we've been pushed back and pushed back on these requests. When Idaho Code explicitly puts it out that we are entitled to that, we're not some committee that's established by the city. These DFACs are created by the Idaho Code and legislature as an oversight committee. So it's frustrating to see that we can't work together. I've had conversations with ITZ about our streets, our, excuse me, our lights, crosswalks, everything like that. It's funny how they have no idea what's going on in Mountain Home, cause it seems like they're not talking to them. We would love to have a meeting with Keller. Mayor, we asked for that back in February and it was denied. So we said we're gonna have our own meeting. Never got to, but now we're getting pushed off. Why are we spending $600,000 with Keller and Associates? All these questions need to be answered, but we can't have an honest conversation, and that's frustrating. Coming up, sir?
I'm Bill Van Handel, um, business owner here in Mountain Home. And I've had the opportunity to chat with each of the council members this past two weeks since last, um, city council meeting. And my reference, or my, my point is in reference to that particular meeting when there was, um, a presentation by Idaho Power and, uh, in reference to the easements. And I would request that, um, visual references be made any time there's, uh, presentations, um, that have a geographic reference, so that, um, we can have that as an assist to understand better. Basically focus was of where, where were, um, these requests are being made? And who's probably they're gonna affect? And that's really what I'm asking for.
Anybody else?
Yeah, lots of things. I don't even know where to start. I should've brought my picture in, like, to show people. How come, uh, I can't show you about the pool? I think you guys can't be reasonable in the library and stuff. Everybody pays their taxes pretty much. There's no reason, any kids should be all fried, let's say, going there to the library and get the book and reading it if they wanna read, and throw the goddamn computers away. All that's doing is making a headache in computers. I've seen nothing but hassle ever since I've seen it, things out. I'm getting scammed every time I turn around, and I'm getting sick of it. Something's gonna happen, bad. And, uh, the same with other stuff. I'm seeing finally a little bit of work getting done to the roads, but not quite near what should be in some of the older areas that are dressed, it's been out there for quite a while and we got refused and people either left or died or whatever, and they never got to see it done. And, uh, at least I see you got here 50/50, but you should work with the seniors a little bit more, I think. You know? Shouldn't hit them as hard, maybe. All these new people moving in, you guys got a mess in that stuff even out there. Sidewalks and stuff getting broke. Bore hole sink in the pavement. Sidewalks. This shenanigan you did down here along the west, part of that was good. But who's gonna, who's gonna clean that little trough out there in front of the sidewalk? That street, then they're gonna have to do that, the little kid out there flagging for the kids of the day? If that close up with all the leaks down through there? There's a grate on the other end down there that is all mangled up. I mean, I go on and on. I see, I got pictures of, the water's just being wasted going down the street, gutters, all over town. Sprinklers tops floating off, not getting fixed, one's right over here. Middle of the afternoon. And we're trying to save water, and we ain't got any water for a while. It just don't make sense to me. Uh, where else is it? The airport. I see some stuff happening out there a little bit, but still ain't getting any much answers of what you guys plan on there. Trucks rolling in and out there, all that kinda stuff. See you guys building a new hangar or something out there? Haven't heard much what's going on. You guys plan on doing sidewalks everywhere, where are you, where are you building these roads in the ZF? Someplace that you honor? Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, that was for the, um, public hearing. You're good. You're gonna have to sign out. Decker, yeah. Sorry. Anybody else? Alright, we're gonna run down to the consent agenda, um, council. Is there anything on the consent agenda, um, one through? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Councilman. Um, conflict of interest declaration, the purpose of this agenda is to provide opportu, oh wait. Has any council had any conflict of interest of, of any, it's been uh, commish regarding, yeah, so, uh, conflict of interest declaration, has any council member had any thing on this agenda that is a conflict of interest?
Mayor. Uh, Councilman Hardjo? Um, I, and I believe most of the council here, received dozens of emails today, to the same effect of, uh, in support of new business, item number six. I don't believe it's necessary to cite every name at this point, but there were in excess of two dozen in my inbox.
I assume council, all council members received those.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Alright, anything else? Hearing none, we'll run down to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda, one through 22, um, that we need a little bit more clarification on? If not, or you would like to pull?
Oh, just hang on. I don't have my packet anymore, so.
Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Brendan?
Uh, who's, who's?
Okay.
Just to stick with my, uh, status quo, I guess you'd call it, can we have Erica come up and give us just a couple, uh, minutes of, uh, why you wanna be on planning and zoning?
Oh. Sure. I need more stuff to do. Thank you for inviting me up here. Um, well, I was just asked if I would like to participate in planning and zoning and, um, I thought it'd be something that I could learn from and contribute to the community, so. First I said yes, and then they said, wait, what are these? But, that's kinda after I asked a little more, I was like, you just have to go through, learn about the rules and apply them, and I thought it'd be something to learn about.
Councilman Workla?
Yeah. Um, so what's your background? Just curious.
My background? Um, professionally, I've been in accounting for the last 20 plus years. My family owns a restaurant in town, born and raised here. grew up working in the fields. Love this city. My family's growing here, so.
Councilman Hardjo?
Sorry. I had something completely.
Oh, there's something to this, so. Okay. Alright, thanks Erica.
Thanks Erica.
No, no, you don't need to sign it. Council, uh, Councilman Hardjo?
Um, Mayor, I had a quick question for staff on, um, on agenda item 18 under consent. Sorry, Tiff, I did not have the presence of mind to ask you this one earlier. In the, um, termination of OpenGov, are we prepared with all of the Civic Plus modules, the others that are in, in process on this agenda and previous, uh, that will account for all of the functions that we utilize OpenGov for?
Go ahead, Tiff. Councilman Hardjo, that's correct, that's, um, this would just provide us per contract the notice of termination to meet the contractual requirements with OpenGov. And, being able to deploy these softwares now, specifically the community development module would allow us time to get it set up, get everything transferred and data merged over. And then we would be able to proceed forward before that May 1st deadline.
Okay, and is, is there an archival aspect to OpenGov now that we can capture to have historicals?
Um, I do believe so, right now as far as archival, it would be more on the development side. And land use to capture everything that's in the works today as we proceed forward. Um, on the licensing side, it's, the nice part is, is citizen front-facing doesn't have to create an account any longer. And right now they do, um, so we're pretty excited about that aspect of it. Okay, I don't perceive, if I find the hiccups, right, it's transition, it's a new platform, but we'll be able to work through them and hopefully it will be a final software merge for us.
Excellent.
So, to kind of caveat on that, the thing about OpenGov that we have in there that's available is that we can pull tailored reports out of OpenGov prior to the closure of it, and those reports, we. And those reports, we can pull through everything Public Works had. We're able to pull all of the data and all the documents. So, we can, we can manually archive that ourselves before we vote.
Wonderful. Thank you, Paul.
Councilwoman Warkla?
Yeah, Paula, and I apologize too. I didn't have a chance to get ahold of you ahead of time, but on page three on the bill run, I'll give you, do you need a chance to pull that up?
Councilwoman, what's that question?
Yeah, sure.
I'm gonna let him sign it.
Okay, yeah. Oh, so for the code enforcement property compliance for those four street addresses, the 280, 250, 150, 300, can you explain what that expense is for, for those addresses?
Hank, can you?
Yeah.
Hank, come up here, please.
The property's abated. There's a violation of the city property for whatever reason. The city will waive the property.
Hank, 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 will you get up here and speak in the mic? We can't, sorry, buddy.
We have, we have to send them to a payment and therefore we have to pay.
All right, go ahead, Hank, sorry.
So, whenever we violate such a property and they don't clean it up, we'll have a, have kids go out and have the property cleaned up for them. And then we'll send them a bill and that's paid out of that line.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Anything you want pulled? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor.
Council, Councilman Harjo?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Warkla?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Run down to old business update regarding Melon Water District. Erica? And team? So, we apologize. I know you came at the last meeting and you were gonna give us an update, but it's kind of a, kind of a good thing because I guess the next day you were, you received some other information?
Correct. So, the DEQ is working with HDR, who's the engineers, trying to, working on a solid plan. And so, for them to be able to approve it and move forward, they're asking for a renewed lease agreement from the city. So, that way it doesn't become like a debt and positive, like funds and then we can use it. As well as like a map showing what it's outlined. And, and that, and that in the future, if the well also, we could use water again, that the city will continue to provide emergency assistance. Pretty much that's what they're asking in order to be able to move forward with that city plan.
So, will you could, so you guys were going to move it, was that to be twenty feet? Remember?
Yeah, so.
Doesn't have to be moved away from your current well twenty feet, which you still have enough room to do it there.
And I honestly don't know what the size of the lot is. I guess that we're, but yes. When we first talked about it, it was twenty feet. So, I can confirm that information from that.
Okay. So, just, just for clarification for me, so we just need to redo the old lease but into a new lease? And then you have to map that out for DEQ purposes? I would probably assume so, wouldn't you think, Chris?
Yeah, they wanna map like this is the size of the parcel that we're renting or whatever.
Okay. And then you just needed to say in there that if something happened, you can still continue to, for emergencies only? That's it?
Correct. That's what they're waiting for from the, from the city to be able to move forward.
Okay. Go ahead, Tiff.
So, we would provide the exhibit on the land lease property. We would have GIS can do that for us. So, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
I, we're just, if we can get the contact to DEQ or HDR, is that what you said? That would be know what the distance that you guys are gonna need away from your existing well to confirm that the property lines are correct.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We can touch base tomorrow and work through that. And I don't think, the land lease, we just didn't put a new one back on the table because we didn't know where we were at. Because we've talked so many different options at this point, they just left their well on our property and didn't get a tenant. Right? Isn't that a quote you sent?
So, council, hearing that, are you amenable for, obviously it's not an action item, but can we start that process and bring it back for the next set, city council meeting? Councilman Brennan?
Tiffany, does the current lease agreement authorize the, like guaranteed emergency access? Is that still legal, Paul, to bind any future councils to give access to water?
That's just the lease. As an extraterritorial customer, so yeah, it's within your purview to do that. And then it's for whatever the lease term is.
Okay. Go ahead, Tiff.
Chris and I have dialogued specifically with what, in regards to what's happening to Meadows in comparable to Melon was, we would install a meter at that turn-on and then in the, in case they go to emergency water in the future, they'll pay every gallon that runs through that meter.
Yeah.
Rather than right now, it's kind of an estimate and they're paying far below what the citizens of Mountain Home Residence pay. So, like that would be where I think we would adjust that lease language to say that we'll give you emergency water, but you're gonna pay what flows through the meter that's provided to the district.
And you guys, it'd be amenable paying that?
Yeah.
That meter?
I mean, whatever we need to do, like.
It would only be when the valve is turned on.
Right.
So, when the valve's not on, there would be zero gallons used.
But that's a big meter, isn't it?
Let's just hope that they never will need it again.
And I mean, if that's something we need to purchase, you know, we can bring it in and put it into our budget. So, that way we can already cleanse that.
Mayor. Councilman Brennan?
I'm, I'm fine seeing that come forward with those stipulations on there. I, it probably goes to speak for itself, but the contingency of emergency access to water should only, in my mind, be applicable once the well is built. So, I, I always try to think like crazy case scenarios, right? Like if, if we have a lease that says, hey, we'll continue to give you emergency access to water for the next five years or however long the lease is, like, we'll continue to give you emergency access to water once your well is up and operational to push that project along for completion. Does that make sense to everybody? So, I know we're not there today, but when it comes back, I'd like to see some language like that.
And then, council, do you have any other requests? I'll bring it back then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, I can let them know that we're gonna meet on this and get them an email and then I'll forward you that email.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, let's see here, let's go down, old business, action item deliberation decision to amend resolution seventeen, twenty twenty-five R and authorize the mayor to sign. That was the boundary of the impact fee, I do believe, right? Yeah. So, council, where do you want, do you wanna cut it off at the highway or do you wanna go for the full lot and parcel of that one, that parcel up in the north end? Councilman Brennan?
I'd like it, I'd like to personally see it incorporate the entire lot. So, extend it out just a little further.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
I'm in agreement with that.
Have a motion?
Mayor, also real quick, can you give me just a second to pull that map up?
Yes, sir.
A lot of pages on the Civic Plus stuff.
It's not on there.
I saw it earlier.
We just, we talked about something.
So, let's see here, the senior city planner sent us a memo on this and I think it's corrected itself, but the second map provided on there, which talks about the option. It does not include Canal Road. They kept the line to the inside on Canyon Creek. But then further down. This is the area of impact proposed in north. The, like the second map of almost the same thing, he does include Canal Road as the, as the boundary road. So, I just wanna make sure. That's, thank you, that's the one I'm looking at first where it says option one and two. The yellow line going south is on Canyon Creek. It's not on Canal Road.
You wanted on Canal?
Canal is what we voted on.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Warkla?
Do you have that big map that we drew on?
I'm sure the planner does. I don't have.
Okay.
Hey, Hank, do you happen to have that map really quick in Brenda's room or office? Please?
Is there a specific question on that? Like you can. I, I guess our biggest, we can adjust the canal and, and that might just be a clarification, but I see the planner, but the biggest thing is we didn't bring in on the map, we didn't identify the full parcel on the line that was drawn.
The red line.
The red line splits the parcel and by state code, you can't split the parcel.
Oh, you can't, yeah.
So, you either have to take, go all the way to the parcel line, which takes to the yellow line in option one, or you come down to option two and the interstate cuts off the parcel. That's what we made the decision to be to amend it.
Cause you can't divide county parcels of land.
Correct. We have to take state code makes you take the full.
On the eighteenth, when we came together.
Yeah, the rest of it, yeah, that could, we, just for sake of drawing the line, but I can make sure she gets the canal.
Councilman Brennan?
Councilwoman Harjo, are you operating that screen? Can you go down three pages?
Uh, yes. This one?
Yep.
There you go.
There you go. So, the, the blue line there does incorporate Canal Road, where we talked about in the meeting. And then the, like the darker blue line for A would be incorporating that entire lot. So, that's, that's the map in that specific area that I'm in favor of.
Yeah, that was one I think you guys all agreed on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, with the change, well, obviously with that parcel map or that map right there, that was what I think, so you guys all agreed to.
Right.
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
This is the seventeen twenty twenty-five R. I'll make a motion to amend resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-five R with the incorporation of the entire lot in question. Send it to the commissioners.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Garvey?
Mayor, I'm going to abstain from voting because I was not at this meeting and I cannot speak to this.
Okay. Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Warkla?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Run down to number three, action on deliberation decision regarding Idaho Powers easement agreement, or sorry, easement request. Item was tabled on six ten twenty twenty-five and reappeared with the twenty-four, twenty-five agenda. What do you guys want to do? I think this is the one, did you have a chance to look at that? I don't, and what was your, sorry, Councilman Warkla, I wanna ask.
Nineteen ninety-seven franchise agreement does provide for us.
So, you, you coped with it after reading it?
Yes. The biggest sneakers I can.
I got you. All right, council, what do you wanna do?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilman Brennan.
Sorry, is there, is there anybody from Idaho Power here? No. Is there enough land there that they, if I understand right, they would basically wanna put up one pole or tower for overhead lines? Is that, is that right? To get them off the power generation station, whatever you call it? For, for an overhead line, do we know?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Tiff.
My understanding is they're expanding that entire facility out there to take on a main transfer line to the new Bennett Sub, is that what's up Bennett Substation? So, I don't know if it's necessarily an overhead line or if it's an underground line. I don't know that. But you need to expand the entire facility.
Okay. The, the question I was going to pose, or will pose is, if there's enough land that the city has that we could lease it even further to the east and allow for a potential road to go underneath the overhead line, if it's an overhead line. But whatever.
Go ahead, Tiff.
That's what I was going with that.
Mayor, I'm not sure you can cross the dirt road because then you're going to be into your existing landfill and you don't think they can dig pole to put aerial into old metal stuff that we sell. One that we are currently closure documents.
It's minimal space, is what you're saying? Okay. All right.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Warkla?
Paul? So, what I'm gathering, our backs are up against the wall, right? With this franchise agreement, there's nothing that we can say, hey, you know, give this for that type thing?
Yes, franchise agreement is supported by the statute.
Okay. So.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
I'll make a motion to approve action item number three in old business deliberation decision regarding Idaho Powers easement request.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. Councilwoman Warkla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
We'll run down to action, item number four deliberation decision regarding ordinance eighteen oh eight, amending title seven, chapter three, section two of the Mountain Home City Code. Mayor. Councilman Harjo?
I was the one who asked to have this table so we could have a little bit of time to sit with it and get a better understanding of current process and procedure. Understanding that this is tied to a more recent state law change and understanding from staff that there is a process for receiving a permit, applying for a permit, receiving a permit tied to these solid waste collection containers. I would like to make a motion to approve agenda item, action four, old business deliberation decision regarding ordinance eighteen oh eight, amending title seven, chapter three, section two of Mountain Home City Code.
Go ahead, Tiff.
Councilman Harjo, did you still wanna have the fourteen day just for clarification or do you want to do? Hank, are we at thirty days on the temporary dust, the dumpster?
Mayor. The thirty days, I thought, was, was the reasonable position on that, just to give people time to do their projects.
And Hank, correct me if I'm wrong, you get an extension through you, right? Okay. Councilwoman Warkla?
How long's the extension then for?
Mayor. Sorry. Council, just for clarification, currently we ask that construction dumpsters on a temporary basis fill out a permit at no cost. That way we can track what's out in the system. If not, we don't really know what's out because we don't keep track of commercial. So, after thirty days, they could apply again notifying the building official of an extension. He'll just periodically, every thirty days, check in and some examples have went over a year. But the problem is, is if we don't see any progress, then we're gonna ask you to remove your dumpster. You're just, you know, holding on to it and keeping it as a yard decoration.
But then, when is that called made?
Probably within every thirty days. So, if we don't see progress within the last time we were out thirty days, then we're going to ask you to remove your dumpster.
But it, like, for, in your example, you said it could cover a year.
But we saw progress for a year on one site.
And progress is, could be ambiguous, right? It could be just, you moved aboard.
Yeah, no.
So, you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just trying to figure out where's the line?
Yeah. I think a neighbor is going to complain before you know it. So, then that forces code enforcement and hang out there a little bit more often then. Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey?
This question, this is for Tiff. Tiff, are you gonna change the fourteen days that's written in this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
It will come back.
To thirty.
Yeah, and it will come back next time to be.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
Question for Councilman Hardjo. Is this, is the draft that we have in front of us, the base, other than fourteen and thirty days, exactly what you're asking to be passed? Was there any other?
Mayor? Councilman Hardjo? Yes, there were no other changes that, after discussing with, with staff, that really stood out as necessary.
Okay.
We did have the discussion about the fourteen and thirty days. I apologize for not including that.
Okay, Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
As far as the definition goes, that's underlined here, the bottom of that page. Containers supplied by a contractor other than the cities. Couldn't it also be supplied by the cities? So it's just, it couldn't just be containers supplied by a professional company, or some of that fact? Because, when I read it, it says, this only applies if you don't use allied, who do we, republic services.
Mayor? Councilman Hardjo? Councilman Brennan, that's a great point, honestly. We could clean up language there to say, any solid waste company.
Yeah. I'm good with that. If you want to make a.
Mayor? Go ahead, Councilman Hardjo. I'd like to amend my motion to adjust language to reflect thirty days versus fourteen in this. And as well add language under the definition that defines any solid waste company.
Mayor?
There's been a motion seconded. Councilwoman Garvey?
You can't use any other solid waste company in the city of Mountain Home. Which one?
Mayor, the charter is drafted this because state code has changed. We can't force contractors to use our, our contractor.
Okay.
So they have the opportunity to select who they would like.
Okay, did that is, it changed.
This has, this sole changes have been done by legal.
This is just for commercials, not residential.
Because that, yeah, that did change then.
Yeah. And so right now, we've been allowing that to occur, but we need to amend our code.
All right, perfect. Pardon me then.
All right, it's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilman Hardjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Aye.
Let's run down to rundown to new business adopt tentative FY twenty-six budget, council.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brennan?
Make the motion to adopt FY twenty-six budget.
Second. Spin motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Aye.
Councilman Hardjo?
Aye.
Run down to new business number two, certify L two for FY twenty-six budget and authorize the treasurer to sign.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brennan?
Make a motion to certify the L two for FY twenty-twenty-six budget.
Second. Spin motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilman Hardjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Run down to action item number three, action item deliberation decision concerning the declaration on the intent of the city. She needs to own real property for real property owned by Ag Equity LLC and set forth public hearing date September twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. Oh, so we're going to run down to item new business, number three, action item deliberation decision concerning the declaration of intent of the city to exchange city-owned real property for real property owned by Ag Equity LLC and set a public hearing date September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor? Councilman Hardjo? Make a motion to approve action item number three under new business.
Second.
Spin motion, it's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Aye.
Councilman Hardjo?
Aye.
Run down to action number, I'm sorry, new business number four, discussion regarding non-resident fees for cities such as park, rec, golf course, and cemetery. Council?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brennan?
I'm pretty passionate about this, but I don't, I don't feel like there's any support from, really, the council or the residents, anybody that's gotten up to talk so far. So I'm going to just pull my request for this topic item.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
I support it. I one hundred percent support it. So I want to say no one from council.
Okay.
Still won't pull it?
Well, we talked about it. Here, if you want to talk about it, we'll talk about it. I don't.
Mayor? Councilman Brennan, sorry.
I don't, I don't know where the line in the sand is, so to speak. I understand that it's not maybe a good idea to hit every fee equally across the board with a non-resident fee. I also understand that there's desire out there that if we're going to change them, we change them all, which would include the cemetery. So a non-resident fee for a cemetery spot.
Councilwoman Brennan, I'm sorry, we already have a non-resident at the cemetery.
Okay.
So to be clear, that fee already exists.
What was the, what was that brought up for? Was it to increase it?
Yeah, the.
Well, you, you haven't increased cemetery rates since two thousand and six. So you're, a proposal will probably be coming to you in the short time.
The niche wall, when we were doing those, it didn't even pay for the niche wall. It was closed. I mean, I think we were like a thousand dollars off, if memory serves me correct. But we are closed, but it just needs at least, you know, pay for itself.
Okay. So in my conversations with city staff, I've also heard a proposal of, and I may butcher this, staff, I apologize if I do, but basically, any activity that includes children, don't increase those rates, but increase the adult rates. So maybe like a recreation getaway, like going to Yellowstone that we budgeted for as a, as a pass-through line. Increase the non-resident, or create a non-resident fee for some of that stuff. I, I believe where there's a will, there's a way, right? So park rentals, what? I'm probably just fumbling over my words at this point, right? Like, if this, if the non-resident wants it, they might just have a resident rent the park, right? And nullify the, the non-resident fee there. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my, all the things we've attached to the packet.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Council, yeah, Councilwoman Workla?
Can we list all the non-resident fees that we charge for each entity, so like cemetery, library?
Those are the only two.
Those are the only two? Okay, so we don't charge it for parks and rec for any of those trips, like he was mentioning, or golf course?
No.
Okay, so.
Airport, the flowage fees.
So I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Flowage fees at the airport, those are not charged by resident or non-resident either.
Okay, so cemetery and library. Okay, and so that's where my question is, is why is it for some and not all, or vice versa, right? So, you know what I'm saying? Like, either non-resident for all of these across the board, or not for all across the board? Like, that's where I'm kind of confused. Why was it picked and choose throughout? You should have it for the cemetery, but you shouldn't have it for the pool, or?
The cemetery is far before I was ever considering probably sitting where I sit. So I can't answer that. I could probably dig up council minutes and gladly provide data to the cemetery as to why. I would imagine it's the only one right now that serves Elmore County, and unless you're going to Pine, or to Glenstarry, so.
And this is me thinking out loud, right?
I don't disagree with you, though.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the thought on this, how we can.
We have, to, to be honest, as a staff member, and dealing, and being the front-facing person, other than the last six months when Amber came aboard, we battle non-resident, resident, almost every time we settle a cemetery lot. And more times than not, the person then has the city resident purchase the lot and then reserve it over to their family member. So they circumvent the process almost every time to us. So then, we're kind of, our hands are tied too. You know what I mean? So I, I don't disagree. I get where you guys are standing, like I told Councilwoman Brennan the other day when we spoke. I get, I get your guys' concern, but as a staff member, I also see the struggles we deal with to enforce what we're trying to do, so.
Mayor? Councilman Hardjo? I think this question is more for the council at this juncture. We have a lot of things to figure out on this topic. Is there any interest in creating a workshop specifically for these fees, so we can, like, spend that day dealing with this, like, in a comprehensive way? Not to lose sight of it, and I'm not trying to push it off from today. I was starting to recognize that, like, as the topic grows, that we have a massive amount of things to look at, and some data gathering. Mayor? Councilman Brennan?
Shasta?
Yes.
Can I sincerely apologize upfront, but can I ask you a couple of questions that, that I didn't prepare you for? I'm, I'm super sorry for this.
No, it's okay.
Did we start the non-resident fees under your administration, the, the non-resident?
Non-resident fees have been in, as far as I can recall, when Louise was director.
Okay.
They were going on them, so that's way more than ten years back.
Okay, all right. What's your thoughts? You're, you're essentially, essentially the only area in our city that, that charges these.
Right, right.
And I, I fully support it, but why?
And considering the fact that, you know, their library card doesn't just give them access to art collection, but ten other libraries. I mean, you're looking at savings, you know, essentially. So when it comes to children, yeah, I, I tend to agree that let's not raise any of those pricings. I mean, we offer a student card rate and not just a one-year non-resident fee. We also have a senior citizen, anyone over the age of sixty-five. We've had quite a showing of resident, non-residents, excuse me, that actually wait until they are of that age bracket so that they don't have to pay for a non-resident card. So take that into consideration. We do have families, military especially, that they'll pay the student card fee of three dollars a year, but they won't pay the year family card, and that's for, to cover everyone in the household.
Okay.
And right now, it's forty dollars a year for a family card.
For the non-resident, or the?
Correct.
Okay, and what, what's the resident for the year, family?
Well, it's, it's totaled as hard as, like, through their property tax, and they just have to show that they have, if they live within city limits. That's why we use them out.
Okay. And just making sure I'm hearing you correctly, that's all I'm doing here, is the city residents get a library card for free because they pay taxes.
Through their property tax, and that's why we ask them, when they come, they bring ID and show a piece of mail that shows they actually live where they say they live.
Okay. And, and do you have your own software to verify that, or do you go through like the city? Okay. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tiff?
The library cards are once a year, renewal is. Right, Shasta? Once a year renewal on your library card?
Correct.
And how long does it stay current? You redo them annually? So do you verify annually?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just, so potentially, like, the customer service facing at recreation could change every time a person comes in, and you're, you're having to re-verify potentially, right? So I'm just throwing that out.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey?
The thing is, I, I had a, a good friend of mine reach out who happens to live in the county, owns several properties in the city, and pays a very, very substantial amount of money in city taxes. And it really bothered him to know that, in, in like Decker's situation, that when his grandchildren were going to come visit, that by the very virtue that they live out of town, he was going to be, he was going to be basically, I won't say the word he used, but anyway. It, it bothered him that he was going to be charged a little bit more when he's, he gave me the amount of money that he pays in city taxes because he owns properties in the city, and that, I think a lot of people, that, a lot of people do own properties in the city, and so they do pay city taxes on top of that. And so there's many different people that are getting penalized, not just non-residents. And so I think we need to be thoughtful of that as well in this decision.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
We also have to keep in mind that if a entity like the golf course or the pool cannot stay in the black, then we have to figure out ways to keep it in the black, right? So we don't know how the pool's going to be revenue versus expenditure-wise next year. So that's maybe something we can see after it's been in operation for a year. But if the pool acts anywhere like the golf course, we're going to be in big trouble, okay? So I'm just, and you know, when I hear, like, I, I, you, you're raising a dollar, so I'm just going to boycott it, right? But I mean, where, where do you guys figure out where you can get your revenue? So I'm just, I'm just trying to look at it from that aspect as well.
Tiff?
This statement hasn't been said, but in the grant documents that were wrote to fund half of the pool project, it was specific that we would not increase the rates for quite some time for open swim and swimming lessons.
What's quite some time?
Right, it's a governing body, but I would say within sixty days of being operational doesn't look great on your grant relationship with the state or the federal government. And that's where you're at today, potentially in discussion, right? The state did understand that two dollars is a low cost, but you haven't had an operating pool in five years. And like I discussed with Councilwoman Brennan, regardless of where a child lives within Elmore County, they swim in irrigation ditches. So I would prefer them to swim in a pool and learn to swim at twenty dollars than to be paying more than a citizen and learn a life skill potentially, because they'll, they won't register then. You can, I guarantee it, if we raise the rates on them, and that's not right to kids.
And, uh, Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but I also want to point out, when he was, when Councilwoman Brennan was raising rates, he's not like talking about raising a hundred percent. He was talking about a daily swim session from two dollars to three dollars, right? So if they can pay the gas money to come from the county into the city, they might be able to pay that extra buck to go swim. That, that, that's what I'm saying, okay? So I'm not saying it's astronomically being raised, but.
And don't get, Councilwoman Workla, don't get me wrong, two dollars is inexpensive. And as I told Councilwoman Brennan, I would highly encourage you to go sit down there and watch the young adults taking the money and then differentiating between, there's children going through that door that don't even have all of the pennies to get to two dollars, let alone now we're going to push them aside and ask them what their residency is. That's just not fair. We're hiring young adults to work those places, and now they have to know where they live. Most people are going to tell you, I live in Mountain Home. Well, no, they live on Summerwind. They don't know the difference. So as I told Councilwoman Brennan, please leave public swimming, either raise it and don't do non-resident. Just make, if you're going to increase it, increase it for everybody.
Gotcha.
Right? Don't do resident, non-resident there because it's not fair to our staff.
So Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
So with that being said, like, since it's early within that grant, like you said, I would like to see where we're at next year with the budget and see how much the pool has been an expense to the community. And then I think we can maybe make more a sound decision then to potentially raise or not across the board. What do you guys think?
Mayor? Councilwoman Brennan?
I, I, I'm going to disagree there. I, I just want to put it on the record that I don't, I don't think every single program of the city needs to be in the black, right? There's, there's a natural expense related to operating a pool, and I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say what every program is, I think, that should be in the black versus the red or whatnot. We've had a long discussion about golf course and all that stuff. But if, I, I don't, I don't. But if, I, I don't, I don't care how much money the pool brings in. It's, that's not, it's not about balancing the cost of the pool for me. That's, that's not my ultimate goal.
So, it sounds to me, counsel, it sounds to me that, that like sit down, cuss and discuss working session, uh, Robert's rules are gone, you guys sit down and just start chit, 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 have those discussions. Is that something that you guys are open to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Uh, Tiff.
Can I ask the council to send at least me the questions you may have so we can find some information for you? Because the work sessions become unproductive when we're not prepared.
Yeah.
And so, I'd like whatever, as they come through, even if you're in a dating my inbox, so we can have the information.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Garvey.
Um, what I think would be extremely helpful is how the budget works on the pool and the Parks and Rec. That would be very helpful.
Mayor. Councilman Brennan.
Also, to, to kind of reply to Tiffany's comment, and Dennis is sitting in the back there, we, we had a chance to meet. And, uh, in full disclosure, right, he, he said, what, what do you want from me? What do you, what do you, essentially, right, like paraphrasing. I said, I don't want you to come in here and tell me like you don't want to do it. I want you to come in here and tell me how you can make it happen if that's the direction of the council. So, uh, how can we make it happen is, is what I would wanna see from the city, uh, for any department head that's involved. Yes, I also care about your opinion and how, uh, you think it will hurt your program or help your program or the, the pros and cons of it, but not just a shut down attitude of I'm not gonna do this, rather, it may take some time, but this is how we can do it. That's what I'd like to see from staff.
Mayor, speaking on the staff level, I'm starting to fucking beating it at work. We hear you guys loud and clear, and by all means, we understand the task at hand. But there are also quirks where, like the pool, for instance, I'm, we're putting a fifteen-year-old kid at the counter, and he's gonna differentiate between residential, non-residential. And now, he faces unfortunately the mother that gets upset at him because they live outside in the counter, right? They don't understand all that. So, I guess on the staff level, we ask that you guys also look at it from our lenses as what it will look like customer service interfacing. Because ultimately, yes, staff, we're forced to go back and say, well, it's a decision of the city council, and we're just upholding what we've been directed to do. And so, then people are going to come to you now and inundate your inboxes with their unhappiness, okay? So.
Right.
Yeah, right. I think we can all figure out something.
Absolutely, I don't disagree. And I appreciate you with all of them, not just one of them, so.
And Councilwoman Garvey, you said the budget, and what was the other one? Sorry.
And it, the Parks and Rec and how the pool operates, um, just, it's, I, I just, um, well, and not, not saying anything towards Councilwoman Orkola, even with the, the golf course, it will never operate in the black. And if it, if it does, man, the city of Mountain Home is doing something tremendous, um, not in anything bad, I'm just, it just won't, it, it won't, it never has. And, and the pool is no, not any different. So, I just think, maybe we just need to see the numbers from that aspect as well, that's all.
Okay, and, and, is there a specific, I know it's gotta be after, uh, five? After five?
Or on a Friday.
Or, and what on?
Or on a Friday.
Or on a Friday. So, is there any specific date? Do you wanna, do you wanna give us some time to, to get with Dennis and staff? And then you guys can send Tiff all your, your thoughts and your, your integration, and then we'll come in and we'll say, hey, guys, once we have it, with this day work, is that something that works for everybody?
That's fine.
Yes. Okay. Alright, okay, we're gonna run down to new business number five, discussion regarding the creation of a golf advisory committee, council.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Orkola.
Yeah, so I asked to put that one on there at our last meeting. Um, I've, I've attended several of the airport advisory committee meetings, and I think they're brilliant in the way that they work, where you have many different views of approaching a subject and, and, and looking at it in different ways. I feel like the golf course, uh, advisory committee could be something similar as that, where you have people who are using the grounds. Um, I, I, I don't use the grounds at the golf course, so, you know, I also don't fly airplanes, so that's my, that's what I'd like to hear from a committee on, um, their, their particular view. So, that's why I think it should be something similar to that. I think the library, do they have an advisory board or?
Mayor.
Council, uh, they've got a library board that is state, uh,
State required.
Statute required.
Mayor, does it work in similar, similar fashion or?
So, what it does is, um, kind of, it, what it does is, um, you guys, I, I appoint, you guys confirm. Um, they are quintessentially, they oversee Shasta, um, and then the rest of the, and then Shasta oversees the city. Shasta's still a city employee, but she works at the will and pleasure of the board, not for the city. Yeah, not for, for us. So, the board, we, we do the budget, well, they, the, the board and Shasta put together.
Looks like a school board.
Yeah, they, they put the budget together, present it to council, the council gives that to the board, and then Shasta is dictated to, from the board to, to do what she needs to do to keep her in it.
So, okay, a little bit different, but same in the way that you're still getting different views, different opinions coming in, um, a variety of opinions. So, I, it's, this isn't an action item, I just would like to see what the other council members feel like on this, uh, creating this committee.
Mayor. Councilwoman Harjo. I do believe that the library board is a separate topic. It's statutorily driven, a requirement by item law to fulfill. Um, the airport advisory committee fulfills a role in a high-risk scenario and, um, facility. And the people who operate in that space all need to confer with one another, come to a matter of briefing and understanding for the matter of public safety and air traffic safety. The golf advisory committee, um, would be an advisory committee that could report to the council and the mayor. I don't know that I feel the same that it's a, that it's a necessary thing to drive the golf course. There are a great many things that we, as council, can handle. Um, the feedback from the public and the golfing community. Uh, the golf advisory committee has not been a, has not been a functioning advisory committee for several years at least. And I, I guess I'd be curious as to why that was, why that was no longer in use, but I also feel that the fact that it is no longer in use and hasn't been um, may also be telling in and of itself that it might not have been a necessary, uh, function of our town.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Um, I actually think, Mayor, you could probably answer that question, um, because up until about, I don't know, four years ago, we had advisory committees, uh, for almost all, we had golf course advisory committee, we had airport, library, we had, um, what's another one?
Traffic safety.
Traffic safety. And we just, we had a lot of them, and, and I, for whatever reason, they all kind of went by the wayside. And I've talked to several people that, the golf course in particular, um, the, the, the people that were on the golf course committee, advisory committee, not only were they out there, but they volunteered their time out there. They cleaned up the, the tee boxes, they, um, they spent Saturdays out there pulling weeds, they planted flowers. I mean, they just, they really, um, I don't know, I guess they were allowed to have something of some onus and ownership to the golf course, and it made them feel like they had a say. Um, I, I fully believe that a, a golf course advisory committee cannot hurt out there right now because, uh, the golf course really isn't doing that great. Um, and it wouldn't hurt to have some, some minds together to bring some constructive criticism, not criticism, but constructive criticism back to the city. Not that you guys are doing anything wrong, but like, hey, here's our suggestions. What can we do to fix it? Um, what can we do to help? If you guys don't like it, dissolve it. But I think that they could really benefit you guys, um, not coming at you in a, in a bad way. It would be constructive, um, because they are out there a lot. So, just my two cents on the, on the golf course advisory committee. And they were, they've been around for a long time, or they were up until a couple of years ago.
Mayor. Councilman Brennan.
I agree with, uh, you know, when I first started, I guess seven, over seven and a half years ago, there were several advisory committees, but, uh, for no nefarious reasons of the city, they just essentially got disbanded for lack of activity. Um, the, they, they stopped meeting, uh, they stopped presenting their, their requests or findings to the council, and ultimately, uh, is, I mean, it's my opinion, that they just basically got disbanded for no activity. Uh, and I'll be honest, this, this is where probably the arrows are gonna get shot at me here, is, um, the only way I would, if, if I had a choice, or maybe I don't, but the only way I would support a golf course advisory committee is if it was, um, a body of not entirely golfers, right? Like a businessman who doesn't golf out there. What's that?
I said, perfect.
Um, so, I, I think I gave an example earlier of the airport advisory committee. Um, people may be like-minded for sure. Um, like, um, AJ out at the airport is not a pilot, uh, but he's an air traffic controller. So, he knows a little bit about the stuff. But, you know, maybe an accountant wants to volunteer to be on the, uh, golf course advisory committee to help us understand the numbers and where we can improve or whatnot. And under that sense, I think, um, if it was like a fifty-fifty split of golfers versus non-golfers, somebody like me who just has never golfed and don't care to ever golf, like, I, I think I could bring, um, some value to that. I'm not volunteering for that position right now. I'm just saying like, some, somebody like that, that ability or mindset potentially. So, if, if you were to split it fifty-fifty golfers, non-golfers, I, I may support it. But if it was just entirely on a hundred percent golfers, just giving us a wish list of, of what they want, I'm not sure that really, um, finds the, the value that we're looking for, that I'm looking for, uh, you know?
Mayor.
Representing the city and not just the individual golfers.
So, I see that this isn't an action item. Um, could we get this on the next meeting's agenda as an action item for us to vote on?
Council, you good?
That's fine.
Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Tiff.
I just wanted to look record to reflect that the golf advisory, uh, board, on February ten of twenty fourteen, the city council voted to suspend it.
Twenty fourteen?
Twenty fourteen. February ten of twenty fourteen. The Parks and Rec committee was also suspended in January twenty-seven of twenty twenty. And the traffic safety was put on hiatus during COVID, so it was also in twenty twenty, so. There are motions that the city council.
It's been eleven years since the golf course, it has been a committee, has had a committee.
Okay.
Spend a minute.
Okay, um, yes, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to think of, yeah, okay, gotcha. Okay, alright, let's run down to, um, new business, action item deliberation decision regarding draft resolution declaring the city of Mountain Home as, uh, Second Amendment sanctuary city. Councilman Harjo, you wanna go first on that one?
Yeah, um, I think this is pretty straightforward. Obviously, we all sitting up here took the oath of office to uphold the constitution. Um, this is a no-brainer, make a motion to approve. Action item number six, deliberation decision regarding draft resolution, declaring the city of Mountain Home to be a Second Amendment sanctuary city.
Second.
Motion, and seconded, any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan.
Um, I'd just like to say for the record that my full-time employer is a law enforcement agency for the state of Idaho. And, uh, I'm not gonna, uh, if, if there was like a conflict or anything, which I don't ever see this cause this is a resolution, right? My, my job and my career is, uh, is very important to me. So, um, just for that, uh, to declare that to everybody, I have an enforcement, uh, um, I'm drawing a blank right now, right? I've taken an oath there that I have to uphold, um, and so there, if there was ever, I'm, I'm rambling now. If there's any kind of a conflict, I don't think there could be, but just so everyone knows, like, I have a job that deals with this stuff.
Good motion, and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the question, Councilwoman Garvey.
Aye.
Councilman Brennan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orkola.
Aye.
Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Alright, run down to ordinances, action item ordinance eighteen oh nine, adopting the fiscal year twenty-five to, sorry, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, FY twenty-six budget. Mayor.
Councilman Harjo.
Make a motion, uh, to suspend the three reading rule and read this ordinance by title only for its one and only reading tonight.
Sorry.
Good motion, and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the question, Councilwoman Orkola.
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Aye.
Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Councilman Brennan.
Aye.
Alright, Tiff, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance eighteen oh nine, an ordinance since titled annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning last quarter, line twenty-two-five, appropriating the sum of one hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars to defer the expenses and liabilities of the city of Mountain Home for said fiscal year and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read, you wish it to pass. Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orkola.
Aye.
Councilman Brennan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Aye.
Alright, run down to final comments, counsel.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Orkola.
Okay, so, before you even came up, um, Brennan, I had this on my final comments. Um, I wanna know where we are at with the reconfig with the Impact Fee Committee and P and Z. I asked that at the final comments, that's the last meeting. Um, again, I don't want to, it look like we're, you've done so much work. The committee for the Impact Fee Committee has done so much work and has invested so much time into that. I don't want that to be, um, ignored or not recognized. Um, so, we had the idea, I don't say we did, but there's been the idea presented out there to do the reconfig, to bring them together. I think we need to, um, um, get that discussion going.
Go ahead, Tiff.
I can share on that. Um, legal has directed us to fulfill the role, the vacant seats in planning and zoning. So, that was done this evening. Um, we have had two members of the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, um, resign since, so that's, right now they have three members, so, um, we have more proceeds in there. So, Jeff's direction was fill P and Z, and then the next step is either to merge the two or keep them separate.
So.
But finding people to volunteer their time to do it has been hard.
Sure, so for the record, we still have two committees. We have the planning and zoning committee and the Impact Fee Committee.
Yes, you do not have a five-member board at Impact Fee right now. You have a three-member board, and you are required to have five.
For the Impact Fee.
Correct.
So. So, if we, so we need to have that discussion. Are we gonna bring them together, or are we gonna keep them separate, right? So, if we're gonna keep them separate, then we need to fill the Impact Fee Committee.
Um, Mayor. Sorry, Councilwoman Orkola, um, it's not just picking people, like, Impact Fee, Paul, help me out. Um, statutorily have requirements on who all can be on it.
Sure.
Impact Fee also has statutes, so blending the two kinda makes it hard, and just taking everybody off one and bringing them in also then doesn't bring us current and venue. We don't meet one code, but we meet the other code, right? And so, that's kinda where we're at today. Um, so, putting Erica on brings P and Z to a full board, checking all of our boxes.
Okay.
And then now we'll get to work either trying to blend, like what was decided several meetings ago, or we're now trying to find volunteers who want to serve the two spots that have vacant on the Impact Fee Committee.
Sure, yeah, no, and I'm tracking everything you're saying. I think we need to come to, now, is that a council decision to say, do we wanna continue with the blend idea? Or do we wanna keep it separate, and then there's advertisements going out trying to recruit for the Impact Fee Committee?
Regardless, you need people. You need people of your community that want to do it.
Well, that's why I say advertising it, right? Putting out there that this, that these vacancies. Putting out there that this, that these vacancies are there.
Which we have.
Okay.
That's known, regardless if, because, because I can't just, for instance, we can't just put Brendan on planning and zoning now and make it a six-member board. Jeff's like, yeah, go with six, but they'll never solve an, an item, right? It could be a tie every day. So now we need it to be a seven-person board, but now I need another body to be on that. And my understanding is another individual that's on the Impact Fee Committee is leaving shortly. So that makes it kind of hard, um, to do. And the other individual doesn't check the box, and then we violate our other code. So, like, I've been trying to solve the problem.
I understand.
Right? But if you can find me people in the community that want to do the work, besides just maybe Brendan at this point, like, I hate, sorry, but that's where I'm at. Anybody want to do it? Please come. We'll-
So one of them has to be, so we've checked the box for P and Z. Now we have to have one that checks the box for contractor, right? Is that what it was?
Yeah, you have to have, uh,
Contractor.
Contractor, construction, or real estate. But then, the problem is, you can't have anybody, you can only have one person on the P and Z Committee that resides outside of your area of impact in Elmore County. And a couple of people who are interested, they don't live in the area of impact. They live outside in the county. But we, we can't have them serve because then your P and Z Commission-
It's heavy.
Is heavy on people who live in Elmore County, not in the City of Mountain Home.
Sure.
And so those are the things we're trying to work through, realistically.
Okay, so in two weeks, I'll probably ask the same question. Where we're at.
Of course. Start recruiting people to come in here and say they're interested and want to do it.
Yeah, sure.
Right? That's what-
Are we putting announcements out on Facebook or through social media?
I know there was, um, I don't know if we've, I haven't done it, I don't monitor the Facebook pages, so I can ask, Mayor can ask, make you do it tomorrow.
Oh, that's great. And this discussion tonight also is, you know, advertising it, so.
Mayor, Councilman Brennan.
Didn't we, am I wrong? Didn't we make a decision as a council to blend them?
Your motion was to reconfigure them, yes.
So that's where we're at, right? Well, I guess we shouldn't be advertising for open seats then.
We need seats on your P and Z Commission, if that's the case.
To increase it from five to seven, or nine, or whatever it may be. Okay. If, if we're, if we're advertising it as for P and Z, it is not for the Impact Advisory Board. But, we'll call it a dual role. So, the, the, the two separate boards are done, essentially, in the future here. And with the three members that they have, they cannot function now. Is that right?
My understanding is they did not make a motion.
I don't know, I think it was a directive of staff to blend them. I don't know if it was actually a motion on the table. I think it was, you've directed staff to proceed forward in figuring out how to blend the two. I don't think you guys should make a motion.
Okay. Yep.
But I could go back and look at that.
I, I'm probably wrong. Yeah, I don't, I thought that's where we were at.
And, well, we have been doing the directive of trying to blend them.
Sorry. All right, council, any other further comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Are we in, sorry, we're in final comment?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know. Did, did we do the full vote on the ordinance or just, uh, reading it?
Yep.
Okay. I, I got, I lost track. Time and place, apparently. Um, I wanted to, to follow up, um, Bill, right? Is that your name? Bill, yeah, I wanted to follow up on his comments about visual representations, uh, for land use decisions, and I'm, I may be, um, paraphrasing. Uh, but I, I would like to see any, uh, applicant, I'm gonna say requestor, any applicant for a, for a land use decision, come prepared electronically to throw their evidence, their documentation on our screens for everyone to see. Not just a, a little kind of, um, poor quality photocopy in our books, but, um, where they can pull up the Elmore County partial ID map or whatever it is. I think that's a great idea for the council to see, to understand, and also for our citizens too. So, is that, um, is that a possibility to make that kind of the policy of the city for applicants to come ready with electronic visual aids?
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo.
Um, Councilman Brennan, I, I had a discussion with, uh, Mr. Van Handel about this very topic the other day. And, being that I typically have my computer, um, can easily connect, I was essentially just going to kind of informally take on that role of putting maps up. When we have those questions about, um, about land use that comes with a visual or what have you, anything that we have in our, um, in our city council packet, my plan was to, was to tab into the, into the big board and have that shown. Um, but I definitely support the, if, if an applicant for whatever reason, land use or otherwise, um, comes prepared with those things, I'm happy to manage that as well. Um, just through the flow of, of the conversation, um, and getting them ported into our TV sometimes has given us challenge. Uh, at times, it might be easier for somebody in the know of how to deal with this to manage the flow of which images or maps or websites are shown.
Okay. I just, I'd like to see better quality. I like the, to me, the, like, the Elmore County partial ID map is hugely beneficial. And I don't think we've been using that to help answer questions and reference points. And Paul, question for you, um, as far as like a record, the city council has to keep a record of what we do here. If a citizen brings something forward and says, hey, plug in my computer to the TV screen, is there any requirement on us to get a, a full copy of what they put up there? Like a, a PDF or like a downloadable file for the record?
Depends on what it's for. So if it's a public hearing for a, you know, land use matter, something to that effect, then absolutely positively, we must obtain a copy of it.
Okay.
Required, um, by statute to have a transcribed public record, which includes any of the exhibits that are presented. As far as, for something that isn't a public hearing and it's just for education, you know, illustrative purposes, uh, then the answer is no, we don't have to necessarily have.
What about in the, in the council discussion after a public hearing closes, and I ask Councilman Harjo to pull up a map that I want to see up here and we talk about it? Does that fall under the rules of the evidence of a public hearing or anything?
You mean like Google Earth or something?
Yeah. Or the, the-
No.
No.
No, you're not obliged to, um, download the software of Google Earth and or, and have that retained on, on what, a zip drive or something? No, you would, there would be a reference to it, uh, that, that was viewed and, uh, actually, you know, I could, so the, the short answer to your question is no, but I could totally envision situations where that could run foul. So, um, I'm gonna give a great lawyer answer.
Maybe.
Sometimes. Yes and no. For the most part, no. Uh, but I can envision that if Google Earth showed something that was dispositive in, uh, your decisions that were made, uh, I'm hoping that some city attorney like me would be sitting there going, ooh, I didn't realize that that was gonna be very relevant in your decision-making. We need a copy of that. Or at least a, uh, what do you call it? Screenshot, like whatever it is.
Yeah. Um, Tiffany, for the Idaho power discussion, did, did Idaho power provide the maps or did we do our own, like, map finding and put it up there?
Those are their maps. Um, let me clarify. The Needs and Balance Map was their map. I asked them to provide an aerial laid over, like, I asked them specifically, that map I asked them to create.
It's terrible.
Well, you, you could have saw it without any land with it, and then you would have been telling me why.
Right. So I'm like, I don't know, like, I just like to see better maps. I've kind of mentioned that my whole time here, but they, if, I'm not, nothing on city staff, I don't know who makes what maps, right? And, and, and which ones are provided by the applicants, but zoomed out images, all the way down to zoomed in images with who owns the property, who, whatever.
Yeah, I spoke with, to Bill as well, and so I said, Bill, the first meeting they came, there was a map, right? But you weren't at that meeting, you were at the second meeting, and there was no map. So we might be apprised, but the citizen isn't apprised of the current location, right? So, yes, I agree, every single time, there should be a, a clear defined map for every single presentation that is presented.
Can you make a comment?
Oh, I said, yes, I don't know.
Just this time, Bill. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Brennan's point, um, fully agree with in that if the party that's making the request or the presentation, give us a map with lines on it, define what they're talking about, so that those of us, uh, or anybody can have a point of reference, of impact of what their design or request is about, rather than everybody just using a pointer to point at a city-provided map, and then you don't have a point of reference later on, because it's all just arbitrary conversation, maybe the written word. But once you see a map with lines on it, then we can have a definitive conversation of who it affects, who owns the adjacent properties, the ramifications of what the requests are. So, that was the reason that, um, and I didn't articulate that point earlier, but, um, where I see the wisdom of the presenter providing a definitive map and lined out where their interests are, then we can assess it in terms of city's interest or private property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? All right. You think, it looks like I have a staff memo, not that it was a typo. Okay. Meeting adjourned. What do we do with these?
Do they, do they go in the bag?
Yes.
Do your business with it still attached. And forget all about-
Good job remembering, I would have walked out with this ring on.
Yeah. I promised Brendan none of us would-
Oh, okay.
The transcripts, the names are-